As members of this council, the Lord be only asking you to continue to guide and guide us on our path forward and always keep an eye on us and make sure we do fit to your need. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, before we get into the agenda and everything like that, I've got a letter I need to read to the council. To the members of the council, in recent months, requirements for both my work schedule and my family life have increased drastically, not to be unnoticed by my absence from members' meetings, interviews, etc. The time constraints in my everyday life have left me with an inability to do what I feel are necessary functions to be performed in the role of mayor. In such regard, I feel for me to continue to hold a position mayor is unfair to both the community and the employees of the city. After much reflection and counsel for my family, I have decided it is best for me to sit down and resign from the position of mayor of Chicago. In departing, I only encourage the council to continue to do their best and improve the community. The care and dedication I have for this community will continue to be unwavering. I will always support the employees of the city and continue to be acting in the community in a positive manner. Although this was a difficult decision and a conclusion that was not arrived at easily, it is what is best for the city and for my family and myself. Thank you. Ryan. That's the official letter. Unofficially, I, for the last four months and going forward, I have been worked hard and not got much sleep and I'm worn down, uh, from my life and work and everything. Bob has done a great job of stepping down as president of the council and, you know, achieved information for me that, uh, in my stead that I couldn't do and he's accelerated me there. And I have to go out there, continue to work hard in his role and take it over until, um, next election. That being said, like I said in the letter, I just, I ask the council to please continue to do things by proper protocol. Don't step out of bounds. Do not, please, go outside of what the council directed you to do or the mayor and president of the council has asked me to do. Always keep the employees key to your heart and in your mind. They are the workforces of this county. We don't do nothing. We just make decisions that affect them. We, we need to be better at that. Always, always keep that in mind. It is for the betterment of the people that we have in our employ and for the members of this community. That being said, Bob, I turn over to you and I will walk out. And I thank everybody for their support and their hard work in my time being here, so.
You can make the motion to accept the resignation.
Well, you can.
I'll make that motion regardless.
Motion by Bob, second by Ernie, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion through. All right, thank you again. Yep. Like I said, we need to look at the meeting.
Do we have a form? Uh, I can go type one. Just my last official. Yeah, we're gonna get a form.
I didn't expect, well, I had talked to some of y'all in the community about this being maybe my last year on my term and I was probably gonna bow out and let somebody else sit in the chair, but I didn't expect it to end this way. So I guess we'll be advertising for a council position. Anybody that's interested, come to the city office and fill out a form. So requirements aren't, aren't very stringent, but you do have to live in the city and, and, uh,
You're registered, brother.
You're registered, brother, and, and there's some financial issues you'd have to answer. Other than that, you just need $20, but you don't even have to do that to fill out the registration form. You probably would, uh, still have to run in June if you fill this chair. Or be in November, but file by June.
Thank you. Here you go.
You can tell this is
Ryan resigned. Now I'm just gonna stand.
You saw this written in the court constitution, the United States Constitution states it has to stay for this term, should be, did you, the mayor, put that together?
I do.
Okay, with that being done and said, I guess you will go with the agenda approval and additions and additions.
We need to add Betsy Coons as a visitor, Mike Hall, James Rupert, Donna Davis, and Walter Posey. Um, and then we need to also add under new business, library board appointments and the first, uh, the fire department's first quarter runs. That's all we got.
Need a motion to accept the additions to the agenda, please.
Make a motion.
Motion by Brenda.
Second.
Second by Linda, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Okay, next is the municipal court report. You want she to accept?
Motion to accept.
By Justin. Second by Chuck, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Treasure reports, I noticed, uh, Crystal has got the quarterly, which will go into the newspaper if approved. Please notice the balance, that was by the end of March, we're halfway to variable plus, so that number has changed. So people pick it up and put it back. Today I got a motion by Justin. Second by Chuck, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Treasure reports, I noticed, uh, Crystal has got the quarterly, which will go into the newspaper if approved. Please notice the balance, that was by the end of March, we're halfway to variable plus, so that number has changed. So people pick it up and put it back. Today I got a motion by Justin.
Second.
Second by Chuck, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. One registered. Okay, I got a motion by Linda.
Second.
Second by Brenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? One registered, passed. Okay, moving on to visitors. Troy Barker, is he here?
He's clear.
Again. Well, maybe he'll come back. Okay. Mr. Walter Posey.
Yes.
You recognize.
Okay. Well, I need your home remodel, which entails ripping out the floor in my kitchen, living room, uh, dining room, possibly bathroom, and ends up doing, I won't, I won't have a place to be able to cook or shower or anything like that. I was wondering if it would be okay if I parked a trailer camper next to my house, hooked up to the sewer, water and power, and stayed in that while I was doing renovation.
What's your address, sir?
Fourth 13th and 11th.
You've probably noticed that there are a lot of trailers parked beside how I even have, I appreciate one, for one, you asking permission to do that. Code enforcement, do you have any objections to that?
No.
As long as you hook up to city utilities, and I assume your house already is?
Yes.
I don't think the council would have any problem, but we probably need to go ahead and do a motion on that.
Do you know about how long it takes to do a motion to sign?
Probably about two months.
Get a timing on it.
Are you gonna be done by, let's say, the end of the summer?
Yeah.
Excuse me? Uh, okay. Uh, we'd like to put a definite timeline on it.
If, if you don't get a better time, I understand, I remodel and stuff, which you need to do, there you go, just come back and, we can, we can, we can fill it.
I'm still trying to figure out if I'm gonna be doing the work myself or if I'm gonna be hiring somebody to do it.
The only other thing I'd like to mention is, do you know what year the trailer is in?
Uh, 2008.
Okay.
Uh, currently listed for sale on Chicago Residence Page from, uh, Brian and Lori Mitchell. Uh, I don't have possession of it yet.
I heard it was in town, so, okay, I've seen it. Thank you, sir. Well, then go ahead and make a motion, that's it.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I got a motion.
I'll make a motion, give it two months, if, if you can hold it in that one.
Sixty days from today, which would be clerk, assistant clerk. You lost our calendar.
July 15.
That sound good to you?
Yeah.
Sound a motion by, okay, second by Linda, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passed. Thank you for coming, Mrs. Sane. Betsy Coons, you're up.
Thank you. I'll be happy to examine, I want to thank the council for allowing the truth to be cut down and trying to do so much better and we don't have to worry about this falling on people and everything, and it's gonna allow us to get the pad port for the jetty put there, so I got you.
Do you know what the timeline is for the pad?
Just when Zach gets time to put the pad in.
Okay, so he's actually gonna do the concrete?
Yes, he's gonna do the concrete.
Thank you. And I agree, that's a lot better than. Uh, Mike Hall.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, uh, most of you or some of you know me, uh, some of you may not, I grew up in Chicago and I have a residence at 626 Walnut Street in, uh, Chicago. Purchased that property about eight or nine years ago and, uh, I am very proud to be able to come back to Chicago and call it my home now. I spent twenty years in the U.S. Navy, retired in the Navy in 1992, and I think there's gonna be some discussion later about something that, uh, me and a couple other people did at Veterans Memorial Park. We cut the grass, cleaned it up, and, uh, I just would like to say that as a veteran, I am embarrassed sometimes to come back and see the condition of Veteran Memorial Park. My name is on that plaque out there underneath the United States flag, and it just tears me up to see how this community has let that park go, and that's why I was shining involved and was helping to clean that thing up, get it wider, longer and different, but it looked a lot better, and I'm proud of what I did, uh, when we took care of that. So, Mr. Mayor, I thank you for the time, and council, thank you for your time.
I thank you for your comments. I noticed that the park was getting to the point that it needed mowed too, but as you may be aware, we were really low on manpower right now. Uh, we intend to discuss that too tonight, at least I do, uh, and how we can fix that, but, uh, I know that Mike and I believe that the Harrises were involved and Chuck Bentley was involved, Jane Rupert, was there anybody else that I missed? Okay, volume, were you involved?
Not cutting the grass.
Well, picking up sticks and, and cleaning flower beds is, is work too, and, uh, appreciate you guys stepping up and doing that, that's what we've been asking folks to do, uh, and the idea behind the spring frame was to get community involvement, so, really, we're proud of, I know there's an issue we might as well just talk about, of using city equipment by non-city employees, and, and there, I understand, is a problem with what was compensation in doing that. We'll discuss that probably amongst ourselves later, but I'm still glad to see the park looking the way it does too, so, and my name's on that wall too, sir, so I'm with you. There's various veterans in here, most of you, you don't even know who they are. Okay, moving on, James Rupert.
Man, I'm guilty of charge. I helped clean that down there and we need, but I just, you know, I did fire department for thirty-five years for this city, I donated my time for thirty-five years, I thought, what, one more four hours to go down and help clean up the fire? And I'll donate my time again if they need to be done. Just call me, I'm on the post office wall, just give me a ring. Thank you, Mayor.
And I, and I also know that you were also involved with the, uh, the bolt ramps that put in the concrete down there as well as Phil and, and Dwayne Luger, probably some more a year or two ago, so, we've got a lot of volunteers in this, in this city that will step up and then we do, so, thanks again.
Yep.
And Donna Davis.
Uh, I was meant to see if I can get an extension on moving a car out of my property. It's on 306 Woodhalls in the Pantry Shed.
Okay, what's wrong with the car, ma'am?
It's just not running right now.
How long has it not been running?
Couple of years.
With it? Is it tagged or licensed or insured or?
No.
Okay. They got four tires and wheels on it?
Yes.
Are they flat?
No.
Okay. How long do you think it would be?
Uh, I'm, I'm working on it, I'm trying to get a title or something or something.
Oh, it's not yours?
No, it's, it's my daughter, but it's your property too.
Oh, I see.
With, I have a garage there, it, can I just put it in that garage?
Sure.
And I can leave it in there?
I believe the ordinance says, and that's, by the way, I don't wanna let everybody know, your ordinances are available online now. So you can go on there and read exactly what they say.
Okay.
Uh, if it's in a building or in enclosed environment where it can't be seen, that's your business.
Okay, it's probably gonna do then.
That's what I would recommend.
All right, well, thank you.
If you can get that done, when does your ten days expire?
Uh, come on your own thing. Tomorrow or the next day, I'm not sure.
Okay, we'll make a note that she visited the council, and I think she, she's probably, uh, she's asking for enough time to put it in the shed, so, but we will follow up with the council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Okay, and next on the agenda is library board appointments. Did I go to that one? All of those. Mayor, Mayor Darnian, City Council, I'm writing a request to be, be appointed, Johanna, Donna McDaniel and Jessica Morgan as members of our library board. Uh, both of their terms, both, this will be both of their first terms, as they have been on the board, but shouldn't have expired since the previous four years. We would also like to ask that you do not reappoint Regina Davis as she has requested to retire from the board. In her place, we would like to appoint Mary Douglas. So, apparently we have three library board members to appoint. So, I'm gonna go ahead and put that to the council.
You make the, you make the appointments and then the council confirms them.
I make those three appointments as requested.
Second.
I got a motion by Justin, the second by Brenda, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Would be so. And we've got first quarter, five apartment runs. Uh, first quarter, we had a total of one hundred and forty-three firemen responded and ten thirty-three calls, but also tally, they totaled one set of member attendances for three minutes. Please consider this is our request for payment for the first quarter, payment for the continued support. So, a hundred and seventy times four is six hundred and eighty dollars.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Brenda. Second by Linda, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Do you have to stand? I, I, Justin, stand. I guess for two city folks. Mike's not here. Crystal, is the, uh, is the video ready, class?
I can change it out here.
I wanna show a one-minute video of, Mike's not here, but while we're talking about water plant, I wanna show you, if you have never been there, we have two fifteen or twenty-foot clarifier tanks inside the building, and they were cleaning them this week, and I had no seen this process done, and they did one two weeks ago and then, uh, they were doing the, the north side this week. And what they do is they bring the tank down all the way, and then you can see the, I'm gonna call it slug, but it's what comes in from the river, from the pump house, this is what your water looks like at the bottom, before it's ever really treated. That's looking down in the tank, and they've got a fire hose washing the walls and floor down, but that stuff in the bottom is what we call slug. But, uh, it, it looks more like catfish, maybe. But all that will go down into a drainage, which goes into another part of the plant, but they do this twice a year for each tank, and they're fifty thousand gallon tanks. So, most of you remember, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we, we showed a video where we had changed out the water plant, uh, the water line coming out from the pump house to the, to the, uh, water plant, and this is where it goes first. So we did pick up probably a little bit of extra mud changing that line out, but this is how hard the guys work, 'cause they will get down in the tank after this is all washing in and scrub the walls and pull down to make sure that it's clean as it can be. Or they bring the river water back in, anyway, I found it interesting. Uh, moving on to utilities, bookkeeper, Mr. First.
Um, the only thing I have is, um, we have a number of residents that are needing probably to have more than one poly cart, so the trash during the next couple of weeks are gonna start that making notes for me, and then I'll start contacting those residents, because they're also using stuff besides your poly cart, which, if they're too heavy, then that puts our sanitation workers in.
And I know the ordinance, there's a charge for the second.
Yes.
And you recall offhand what that is?
It's the same as your first poly cart.
And how many extras do we actually have available?
I don't know.
There's many.
Quite a bit?
Yeah.
Okay, so it shouldn't be a problem?
And that's all I have.
Okay. Court, pardon?
Don't have anything.
Assistant?
There's gonna be a fundraiser at the main Leslie, I think on the twenty-sixth. Part of the rental agreement rules is that, um, a deposit fee with alcohol in the building is a hundred and fifty dollars, so it's refundable, rental fee a hundred dollars per day. Uh, this must be approved by the Chicago City Council, uh, and also there's no alcohol allowed outside of the building. I just need, uh, the council's approval to go ahead and allow that, they are willing to pay the higher rental fee, and they already knew about not allowing any alcohol. They are not gonna be serving it, they're not gonna be supplying it, but if somebody wants to come in with an alcoholic beverage to eat with their meal, and I'm, I'm sure there probably has been this done in the past without getting the approval, but they're wanting to do everything legal.
You asked me for a motion, correct?
Yep.
You didn't pay for it, you never will pay for it. I'm looking at it.
Motion by Justin, second by Brenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed.
And the other thing I've got is I was contacted by a lady down in Tulsa, she's interested in purchasing old water meters, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Miles today, but, uh, I'll get with him to see if we've got any, uh, extras that we're wanting to get rid of, um, and she, she pays per meter, but it depends on what meter, what kind of meter it is, so, um, if we, I just, I need, I guess, need the motion, uh, to allow us to sell them if we have any extras.
Are these meters serviceable or jump meters?
She didn't, she just said she was interested in purchasing old water meters, so, I mean, if you guys don't wanna mess with it, that's fine, um...
Miles, do we have a pile of old meters?
We have, we have a pile of old ones, yeah, and we have a very small supply of new ones.
Are the old ones fixable or are they past fixing?
I honestly have no idea. I think they're, I think they're in state down. Yeah.
If you guys can give a, uh, make a motion to allow us to check into it further, if you can go ahead and do that, I can give Miles this lady's number and he can visit her.
I'm making a motion to give Miles the, uh, the right speculative decision on it, if we can sell them or if they're non-serviceable or sell them.
Did you talk numbers at all, Tom?
No, I asked her, I said, how much are you willing to give, and she said it depends on the, the brand of the mo, uh, the meter and, and a lot of the places that buy If you could go ahead and do that, I can give Miles this lady's number, and he can visit her.
I'm making a motion to give Miles the, uh, the right speculative decision on it. If we can sell them, if they're non-serviceable, we'll sell them.
Did you talk numbers at all, Tom?
No, I asked her, I said, how much are you willing to give, and she said it depends on the, the brand of the mo- uh, the meter and, and a lot of the places that buy and, buy and buy weight.
It's probably brass, ain't it?
Probably brass, probably worth a fortune.
Three dollars a something pound.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a motion on the floor, that's my justice.
I sold brass for two fifty pounds.
Okay, so before you agree to sell, let's get a number across the council. How about that? Okay, I got a motion by Justin, second by Chuck. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
And that's all I've got?
Thank you.
Oh, I did, I did want to thank everybody. Um, this is my last council meeting, so, um, I appreciate you really supporting me and, and the residents, um, doing, you know, doing the things, so. Thank you.
We appreciate you, uh, twenty-eight years of going to the house. Okay, city attorney. Shane? Thank you. Please, Chief, welcome back.
Thank you. I don't have anything added to request at some point an executive session for my own personal.
And that would be number three, I think, at least, right? City supervisor?
Uh, I would like permission to get some streetlights. Uh, I've got a paper here for ten, ten of them. Uh, we have one left in inventory. So for ten of them, they're a hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty cents a piece, it'd be thirteen hundred and twelve dollars to get ten more to replace whatever's going bad.
I'll make that motion. Motion by Ernie, a second by Justin, to purchase ten?
Ten, yes.
Ten, uh, city streetlights for thirteen hundred and twelve dollars?
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries? Okay, mayor, I guess that's me tonight.
Hey, before you start, I'm on the agenda, but I'm kinda proud of what we're gonna do here. It's called Love LaBette, and the countywide is going to be dedicating April the nineteenth through the twenty-seventh as LaBette Week is dedicated to fostering kindness and community encouragement, focused on encouraging the international act of kindness. Our vision is to show strength to the community, bond together, positive behavior, show appreciation and love to everyone. Your part can be volunteering, donating, or simply spreading kindness through a small town of active kindness. A big impact is going to be implementing it to others, help neighbors, and supporting our local business. So the chamber has hooked up with this. We're gonna be on the flyers, so I'm really gonna work hard from the nineteenth to twenty-seventh to show our pride of Chautauqua. Like Mike said, we're gonna all bond together and get through our hard times. So just want you guys all to know, I've got the flyers at the bay if you want one. Haven't came up with a game plan yet because they just called me today, but I think it's a really good program that we can get involved in our community with, because we've got the people, we've got the support, and we've got the love. I might not be a veteran on that wall, but I'm very, very proud of our park, and every day we're gonna get it better.
You built that wall, didn't you?
Yeah, I did help build that wall. Didn't you mention that?
Matter of fact, since, since that wall been brought up twice, it, it was brought to my kitchen, but you can still add names to the wall.
We need some names.
There was some people that got left off that wall for whatever reasons, so.
We need some names because we got people wanting to go on, but we have to have so many before they can come down and do it, so. If anybody knows of any names or people that wants on it, we sure, we'd like to have them.
Do you know what that tumbler is?
No.
Okay, fifteen, a hundred?
Oh, no, 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 ten, ten, no, it's it's not that many.
What's the cost?
Are veterans with dishonorable discharges honored? Has that been even looked at?
I don't know.
That might be a question to ask.
With veterans with dishonorable charges?
Yeah, it's been dishonorably discharged?
I'll find out.
I was asked that question the other day, and I I thought I was gonna talk to you, too.
I think in the beginning, didn't you have to produce your DD two fourteen to get on there?
No.
No?
No. We took everybody for uh, we took everybody for their word and their money.
Of course, and a lot of it, things are already passed on.
Yeah, you know.
Can we put something on the city website about adding names to the veterans' wall?
Yeah, yeah, I just, no, you mean the Facebook page, yeah. Yeah, just give me information.
Okay, yeah, we, I'll get to the fees.
For your, your loving LaBette, me too.
Okay, okay, yeah, I'll, I'll forward that to you.
Okay, thanks.
But anyway, I'm like Mike, I'm proud of our parks and would go do anything to do it.
Okay, uh, for my subjects. I asked Crystal to give me a list of the current ATV golf cart license plate participants. Here's the list. There are people that I know that are not on this list, but my question is, does the police department have this, access to this list?
Yeah, if she takes the registration form, she puts it in my box, and I have a folder over there that has all the the actual registration sheets.
The, uh, the plates are, if you haven't seen them, they're about this big, and they're white and black, so they're not hard to to see if they're displayed, but I've, I've noticed that there are several still running around town without them, so. And I, and another thing that came up, and Crystal answered the question the other day when I was here. An individual came in and wanted to know about tagging a minibuck. And isn't that what he said, a minibuck, and you said they're not allowed on the city streets at all?
Depends on, depends on the size of the engine, right?
CC.
If it's over forty-nine CCs, it can't be operated on a public roadway. Anything under forty-nine CCs does not require a licensed tag, it can't be operated by those. I mean, I just remember back years ago, little rocket bikes were all fally. And if they fell under the forty-nine CCs, the old mop heads were under forty-nine CCs. But anything over that has to be, it cannot be operated on a roadway unless it's strictly legal.
So I'd just like to bring that up.
Now, I talked to that individual, and I explained to him why he could not get a tag or it cannot be operated on a roadway.
And I'll, I'll talk to you afterwards, too, about something else, Scott, if you'll remind me, it's not worth bringing up here, but I think I'll move on from that. Under old business. Well, let's go to council. Ernie, you got anything?
Nope.
Brenda?
Not really.
Chuck?
Uh, is there something we can do to resolve, uh, mowing? Is there sheeting sign, use the city, you know, label to use these stuff to get the parks? I mean, we've got Easter coming up, and there's no way that all that stuff's gonna get done.
Okay.
And then I got all volunteers that can help to do it.
Right, and, and that's, that's something that we started talking about, and really did finish. We don't have a city mow man or one person at the, at the moment. And we're down to, two people on public works.
Where is, they hired? Johns?
Won't go to work without the right amount of money.
So you refuse the job?
No, Johns is, he just hasn't started yet.
Oh, yeah.
Does this season the money? He has history.
Yeah, um.
Can we not have a voluntary waiver signed until we get out of this pickle? I mean, we all love our city.
No, I'll, I'll sign a waiver.
I mean, and there's no call the voluntary waivers, so.
But my understanding was that it's not, it's not the volunteer part, it's the using city equipment.
No, you, you pay for the gas.
That's, that's the issue.
And that's, I was gonna say.
That's a legality.
I was gonna say, I've been mowing stuff around here in town, my mower forever, so, uh, I, I don't, you know, and then we take care of Elmore Park and the ball field, so, with, uh, all my equipment and everybody else's equipment, so. It's all Little League doing that, so. Yeah, I, I don't know, is it, how many mowers you need? I got four, that's all I'm saying.
But can our attorney not fix up a waiver where they can use these? I mean, that's what they're for, just because we don't have a body on them.
Yeah, my mower's a bad boy, though.
They are commercial-grade job deers, and it costs a lot of money, and
They're not doing any good, they're sitting there, nobody operating them.
And they're paid for with
Somebody operates one of them, don't know what they're doing.
I personally would rather use my own mower than the city's one, 'cause I don't wanna tear it up, but, 'cause I know how quickly it is. You can bust a spindle doing anything, and
You can just be riding one, and it breaks down on its own.
Yeah.
No fault to anybody.
Yeah.
And the, the mowers the city got are
Yeah, and when they, when they paint everything green, they paint a big price tag on fixing it, so, don't they?
Yes, it is. I know, I've had one for fifteen years, and I'm buckling.
Go ahead, Phil.
Pinga.
I've got one dislike them, and I've run it, one of them for twenty years, so I'd say I'm qualified to ride one.
Do you not wanna use your own on city, is that, is that your feeling?
The what?
Do you not wanna use your mower if you're volunteering to do city?
Well, I did several years ago when Ron Wood was the mayor. There was a bunch of campers coming in, and the park wasn't mowed.
Right.
So me and Ron Wood took our mowers over there and mowed it, so they could have a, a mowed place to park. So, I mean.
I just, if I'm gonna volunteer, I'd rather use my own equipment. I'm like Ernie, I gotta agree. I, I can't just stick anybody on one of those commercial gr- I know you know, and Bill knows, and I know, and, but
Well, it's just like, I got a CDL, but I can't go drive the trash truck, you know? But they won't let me do that. I volunteered to do that when we needed a trash truck, right? So I gotta be an employee.
I do think it's, it's probably something we can work with about paying for the fuel and the oil and your time, maybe, towards the, wanting to own your mower, if you wanna volunteer to mow a park or something. I don't have a problem with that.
But it comes down to the point that we're not asking for that, we're just trying to help the community out and get it done. And basically what they're trying to say.
Right.
Are you talking about just city property, mowing just city property?
What they, I mean, what do we gotta do? We say, you wanna need a waiver to mow the city property? Is that what they're saying?
Waiver liability.
Yeah.
Would city need to give you a waiver to mow?
Waiver liability, so if we get hurt using the city
Oh, okay, yeah.
Well, we have one.
Yeah, we got, we need one of those.
When they cut the tree down in the park right there, then they come up, so, waiver liability.
What say the city attorney? I need your input on this, now.
Well, you can do it. I don't know that it's very advisable. It could, it could create problems, you know, you just don't know down the road. This is expensive equipment, it's damaged by someone who's a volunteer. Is the city gonna need the bill, or are they gonna pay for it? Who makes the determination whether it was their cause, their action that damaged it, or did it just break on its own? It's a kind of a sticky wicket, to tell you the truth, but you could issue waivers if you wanted to.
Pay for the police car, and they didn't check the oil.
I volunteer to use mine.
Well, I don't know why the city can't, if you've got volunteers that are qualified to operate the equipment.
I think qualified's the key word there, Mike.
If they're, I mean, you got people that have run these, this equipment for twenty, thirty years, they ought to be qualified to run a city lawnmower. If it breaks, it's gonna break, if you got a eighteen dollar an hour guy mowing it, it's gonna break. I don't see anything why you can't have a, a, a liability form that says, hey, if I get hurt while I'm volunteering, I'm not gonna sue the city. But my gosh, people out here have been running these lawnmowers for twenty, thirty years, and don't give it to just any jackleg that comes up here. Have them, have them have the qualification to run it, and if they can run it, let them run it. Why not? I mean, it's free labor.
Besides, who's qualified, who's not? I think I'm ready to table this for further discussion. We've got some Appreciate everybody's willingness to jump in, and feel free with your own mowers. I know it's already going on, but I can't commit to city equipment like that without, without some kind of legal guidance. Just can't do it. While I still have the floor, though, I think we probably need to, uh, to elect a new president of the council. So council needs to take the ball in with that. I would say that if you accept the nomination, realize that you may soon be in this district. 'Cause that's the next step. So be willing to take the job of being mayor if you accept the nomination for council president. I need a motion from someone. Or motions. It doesn't always have to be this woman. Okay, a lady that has a nomination for Justin to be president by council?
What's saying, Justin?
Second. We got a nomination by Linda, a second by Ernie, and he looks very disturbed, and he's not gonna
I wanted to see his face.
All in favor? All opposed?
Not opposed, a, a party, sir. Sorry, Jack. I'm not hearing very well, Mike.
Three, four, and one opposed. Motion carries. Congratulations, Justin. Okay, moving on to old business. I'm sorry. Justin, what are you here?
Uh, I got the operator put in at the fire station. Uh, put it in, power to it. Put a trace line out on it, I talked to the company. They're sending me to take it out, or fix it, as soon as it is in, I won't be able to put it in again, it'll be operating.
It was behind me, but
Yeah. Yeah, that's the, they're going, they're going, they're going. It happens, uh, how to my, my relation, they installed my shows, I said, every time it happens, and she was like, it's the first time. They ordered it, parts all the way, and it's basically working.
So we're down, opening the door manual every time we need it?
Yeah, we've been that way since, since last, it's been a couple of few months. Yeah. I didn't know what operation was, we, we didn't have the budgets and stuff like that, so.
No, those were waiting times for the whole, okay.
Uh, the other thing is, I do have a fireman that will be off of probation here shortly. I have a little guy in my mind that
I have a little guy in my mind that the fire department will not, uh. Vote him on. Uh, he is Paul Alanki, and he uses my pit proper. I would like to, after probation, to have him do it for new gear, new gear is expensive, uh, I don't have an exact price of it right now, but.
Make your shrink, man, it's probably, come on.
Jump on his shoulders, I can get it to him.
So pretty good.
Yeah, it's about thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars to have to, the fireman, proper gear. That is just something that's coming up shortly here around, like, eight, nine years.
I did get a fire department, um, application.
Um, with that being said, too, uh. Before long, I know we got stuck, not the budget and stuff like that, I'm gonna check our gear next meeting, but. Our gear has a ten-year, uh, life expectancy before insurance kicks in, we're not bothered. Um, I think we're getting close to start, to have, to start fitting the new people. A few years back, we went about three to four firemen a year, and we did a cycle over here, so. That's something that's gonna become an asset, that will be about twelve thousand dollars every year, to keep us fitted properly.
Well, it looks like you're pretty healthy in firefighting equipment.
Grant. Give it grand for what's on.
Now, do we appoint firemen, or nothing?
Yeah, and Jim, you, uh, they present the roster, and then we confirm the roster at that point in time.
Is there somebody you're aware of here?
I don't know.
I'll talk to you after, if you hang on to. Uh, Linda? Okay, old business. Melissa Hockett.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, I forgot something. I received a call from Scott Sullivan with Liberty, uh, late last week. They are gonna be replacing a couple of their poles down by our substation. And they're going to, on Monday the twenty-first and twenty-second. They're going, we're gonna have a townwide outage, starting at ten P M. at night, while they switch everything over. And it's going to last about three to four hours. But by them doing this, there's also in the same pole, there's, their stuff and our stuff, they're gonna switch our stuff over to, at no cost of us. If they do that, then we have to switch our stuff over, so. Monday the twenty-first into the twenty-second Tuesday.
So you said maybe three hours, four hours?
They said three to four hours, that the, it'd be a, it'll be a total outage for the entire town. But they're doing it, not to try to limit as much interruption as they can.
Okay, moving on, Hockett, not here?
Not here, but Travis did provide some pictures, I have those, I have a few of those.
This is the, uh, residence that we had, had a complaint against, coming up the yard.
Chuck Campbell, but down there.
That's all of them.
So what is the P D assessment?
I don't know what the topic was, I'm just talking, but Travis should have answered that, he's a Bush talk train.
It was pretty bad, it's kind of a terrible picture.
I mean, just when it looks now, I think that, I would think they need any additional time, I mean. If they've been already given the deadline, obviously that's what, were they supposed to be here to ask for extension?
Their time ran out, maybe a little bit.
I say proceed with the resolution, going and clean it up, but.
It's too bad we didn't come to this resolution during the spring cleanup, when we had the dumpster out here. 'Cause I know there's some other piles around town that, that appeared mysteriously over the weekend after the spring cleanup was over.
No, that was just yesterday.
It went through Monday.
I thought it ended at fourteen.
Yesterday.
That was Monday.
Yeah, we, we were already, we dumped the roll offs already full by Friday.
Right, so what are you saying, it was already out on the road?
Yeah, they put it out on the weekend, it, the, the cleanup wasn't, it didn't end until yesterday, so.
Oh, right. I thought I heard somebody say that the south side stuff was put out after the Monday trash run.
Uh, there was stuff on both sides that was put out after, not, not after the Monday, but it was out there by Monday, but. We were already, the, the thing's already at capacity.
So, I guess we start a resolution, and this is the second, I believe the second meeting that they were supposed to show, and they did. Yeah, it is, so.
You need a motion to proceed with the, the resolution?
Say. Motion by Linda, second by Ernie, proceed, resolution, hall of favor? All against? Motion carries. That said. I would request the council members drive by and, and get an eyeball for what meets and does not meet acceptable yard.
And in this resolution, we need to know how long you're going to give them to, you know, after they receive that, before we go in and, and clean it up. How long do you want to give them on the?
It's ten days.
What's the norm on that, Scott?
Usually it's ten days.
Ten days, sounds good.
As far as, you say go around and look at it, when we've done it in the past, we went in, we made the parking lot, we take everything, so that's.
Put a front loader?
Yep.
And again, I'll say. This is not the only yard in town that looks like that. So, are we setting a precedence? Because some people consider some of this stuff antiques, yard art. I know there, there has been a tractor parked on, across from the old nursing home in the yard for ten years already. And I mean, it's an antique, it's got the studs on the steel wheels.
I think it's still on.
It hasn't moved.
I'm just telling you, I think it's still on. I'll tell you, that's the hardest thing about cutting portions, because what, one person considers trash, another person's trash.
And I was just by there today, they've just moved in a greenhouse. On this property. And those little Amish looking ones, pretty nice looking ones.
So there were funds available for that, is that what you're saying?
You read my mind.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something about that? As an outsider, when I drive around here, there's not a whole lot of question in mind, in my mind, the difference between yard art and junk. You know, and if, if, if we don't have an ordinance that specifies what that is. My gosh, there's a number of places around here that need to have the skid loader put in, and, and junk to clean up our city to make it look better.
I would agree, but we're playing our military clean art league standard, on, that's what our standards are, and I'm sure you're somewhere. And I think our police chief has, has probably said it best, that you cannot force people to take pride in their property. However, I don't like driving around and seeing a junky yard, I don't like looking at them either.
In the city that I come from, they do have ordinances. The city establishes ordinances as to what your yard can and cannot look like. I don't know what ordinance is, and I'll tell you, I'm gonna read it, you can see it's online, I'm gonna go check it out. But I think we need to pay attention to what our ordinance says, and they're skirting the various lines of. What's accessible and, or acceptable, and what's not, and a lot of properties figure out the, this now.
I agree, and all I'm saying is, we're starting a ball rolling here.
And I think it's fantastic, you know.
Now, I'll also say that it's a lot easier for your city council, your governing body, to make decisions on, on issues like this. If there's a formal complaint by a citizen, maybe it's somebody's yard, or, or their property.
Not necessarily the same people that go around and make complaints, but if it is a neighbor, or an adjacent neighbor, that is better. Than the same person driving around.
I, I think it would behoove the council member to have a bunch of stuff cleaned up, because. All it can do is appreciate, not depreciate, the value of property as you don't.
Yeah.
And that brings in more tax dollars, more revenue to the city.
No, no disagreement there at all, Bill, I'm just saying, the last time we tried, we saw a bunch of privacy fences going up around the same houses that we probably.
Because I was, because I was in yours.
Yes. So, now that the privacy fences have rotten, way down. So, I would rather, I would rather go in and just raise the whole property, but then we got the, we got the cost of that.
That's what I was gonna say, here we are with major budget issues, and all of these actions cost money.
Is there any way that you can, that establish money, write the people a ticket? These people that, that live there, and been warned, and I'll swear to you, you can get a ticket, my brother got one, two tickets, and he was one day late.
I used to have the same kind of ditch in my house in Oswego, that was the main waterway for the, the water system, and I used to keep that ditch mowed. And if I didn't mow it, you know, it was like sand and water, if I didn't mow it and weed it, I get a letter. And now I drive by there, and it's that tall, and I'm like, oh, what, you know?
I know so, we are done, I swear to you, if you don't mow the ditch, you don't get a warning.
Scott, has a, has a ticket been written against him?
We have, one, two, how many courts have we had tonight? We had several notions that you'd have to go to the court tonight.
It's been bouncing, it's been bouncing that way, we've been moving towards that.
What are you talking about, the, the old antiques, or non-antiques? I have a, I don't know how to say it, an, an issue with not being able to have an antique vehicle on the, the main road. Because that actually brings people into town to see it.
I know what you're saying, I know what you're gonna say.
I mean, it does.
Is it tagged as an antique vehicle?
That was just a.
No, I'm just saying in general, in general. Because if I'm driving, granted, yeah, I own a flea market, so I, I deal with junk, but. If I'm driving through a town, and I see old antique vehicles sitting there, you're gonna keep going to see if you see more, if you're into that kind of stuff. Why is it that you can't have? I, I haven't been here as long as you all have, so, I'm just asking the reason why you can't have one.
I think my opinion is junk breeds junk, or more junk, and if what you witnessed across the main street from your place.
Right.
How that, now it's cleaned up again, but how long will it take for it to get back to where it was, if we let the same guy come back in? It's just, for me, it's an evolution. We've got ordinances, I, I highly recommend everybody go read them, and see what it says. And if you're in compliance, you are, if you're not, you're not, if you've got a problem with it, bring it back to the council.
Well, I was just asking what the, I, I don't know, maybe everybody else don't see what I'm saying, but.
Well, I see what you're saying, but a lot of people will think a, a ninety-six Bonneville with this much, uh, tar on top of it from the color screen, you know, call it antique and stuff like that. Where, where do we draw on it, once, why? I, I know good common sense will.
Antiques are antiques, there's a difference.
But as far as a car.
We don't have off on that ninety-six being an antique.
No one's gonna wanna see that, but it's a thing.
Okay, well, I was just curious.
It has to, it has to be thirty-five years old to qualify, first off.
Correct.
But our city ordinance says that if it doesn't have a tag, if it's not insured, if it can't move under its own power in thirty days, then it's a junk vehicle. And that's, that's that, right now, they're compiling a list, and, and you know, going around and giving citations, but, and we get enough.
I mean, I don't have one, I'm just asking.
It, it might, like, even go in when you go down.
Yes, and they have a bunch of different antiques that people go to the city.
That's something we would have to enforce, you know, everybody's gonna.
And plus, they're harder to mow.
I understand, I understand, I was just asking a question.
Okay, we need to move on, folks, uh. Next on the agenda is Saturday brush dump discussion. We tabled this on the last meeting, I believe.
I don't think we have the manpower to pursue anything like that this time.
I noticed even the brush is still sitting around, so, but that's. We're more interested in the, in the dead trees than the brush already on the ground. Uh, so I think we'll table that again. Next, we're looking for an update on Officer Edward's contract restitution.
Patty sent Shane all the payroll information, I sent Shane all of the mileage, and that type of thing.
And I'm working on the insurance.
Patty, or Tommy's working on her part of it, Shane's got, I think, the joint information, so maybe he has that data.
I received yours, Scott, but, uh, I don't think I've received Patty's, uh, yet, uh, or Tommy's.
I haven't got mine done yet, I will move that.
Okay.
But I should have it done tomorrow.
Okay, so can we assume that by the next meeting, we'll have something to look at on paper that Shane?
Unless I got more questions for, uh, anybody that's involved with paperwork, I won't know until I see it all, but possibly, possibly not, I can't tell you until I see everything. Table. I'm, I'm prepared to follow. Petition could breach contract in essence, uh, we're gonna need to know her address, too.
I, oh, she, she was working in Baxter Street, P E, so she'll probably be served over there, she's living in Missouri somewhere, I heard, I don't know.
Okay, well, I can get her served at work, that's not a problem.
Okay, we got a complaint form. About Co-op manager, located, Chicago location manager. Against the subcontractor for our suit, this is the mayor, who's a subcontractor. I've read this already. I'm gonna walk around, basically, the first accusation is that the city did not have permission to be parking. For the contractor to park the, putting on the old part of the Co-op property. Secondly, which ended up being.
We did.
Which ended up being false, we did have permission compared to all, uh, Scott had made that phone call, I hear. But secondly, when their, the mower that they paid to come in and mow the grass. Ran over some bonding straps, the contractor had, packed something through it. And evidently did a thousand dollars worth of damage to a J D mower. So they're wanting restitution for that, rental all the property, and what have you. I think this letter is going to kind of dissolve itself, because we did have permission to do that. And I drove by there, the grass was about four to six inches tall. And if, if I had a, a nice mower that I carried about, I think I would get out and walk around, see what was in the grass before I turned my mower on.
Bob, while you're talking about grass, we got started, you know your grass letters, uh, I gave Crystal a list, and she typed letters. I gave Crystal a list, and she typed letters for twenty-six yesterday. Places that are already, most of them are one we mow every year, and they're already above twelve inches.
And are we making a spreadsheet of all that information?
He's made a spreadsheet, sent it to me of the addresses. So I was in class today, so the ones I have that have to be hand delivered, I'll get those for cooktops tomorrow for certified mill.
She's gonna, I'm gonna get the list. She's going to write the letters. When they come back, I'll give the spreadsheet of when their ten days are up and give a work order to Miles. That way, kind of shares the workload between, kind of between us.
And the other thing I want to follow up on the sewer project is, I wanted to remind everybody that before you approve the final payment and close out the grant, you need to make sure that all the residents are having the notification that if they're not happy with the condition that their property has been left in, uh, we have the option and and the responsibility to make sure that everybody is satisfied with the condition of their property before we release the final check to the contractor.
There's a lot of work that needs done in there.
And, uh, there's already something been put on our our Facebook page about getting on a list here at the city. So citizens, if you have a problem with ruts or any damage that was done to your property by the sewer project, make sure you call the city and get on the list. And we have a monthly updated meeting every first Tuesday of every every month with the contractor, and they had already, they were gonna start this next week or so and fixing those properties.
They started yesterday, and we're working today.
Okay. It is in work. Please bear with us. Law for a good cause. Has Shane looked at that complaint from the, has he had any contact with this?
No.
Just for info?
Bennett's taken care of it.
So it's, is it a dead issue?
In my area, it's a subcontractor intervention.
Well, I figured.
Okay, budget discussion. I think Amy sent out a text to all the department heads and, uh, the, uh, we used to call it budget call, but we need your inputs. And only your most needy items. Really not a want list, have to have the. I just wanna touch on the audit for last year just a little bit. You guys had those, uh, put in your folders. If you haven't had the chance to look at that. I'm gonna tread lightly. It's very evident where the financial problems of this city were last year. Hence, the overtime that we accrued was astronomical. We cannot do that anymore. I'm gonna ask the payroll clerk to provide me info on all overtime hours on time cards before they're paid.
You're gonna have to approve it through the mayor?
I'm not saying approve right now. I just wanna see what what we're, what is on the time card and who's doing what. I've asked and I've, I've.
While we're on this subject, I have a question. Um, Patty, when do they start paying law enforcement overtime?
They work a hundred and seventy-one hours in a twenty-eight day period before they accrue overtime hours.
But we don't, the city doesn't pay by twenty-eight days?
They pay by the hours that are worked in that twenty-eight day period. And if they work more than a hundred and seventy-one hours, then they get overtime hours.
And is that in any other capacity?
What do you mean?
If we hired them to mow grass on their off time?
No, that goes by.
As a part-time job.
That goes by, okay. For us, it's not like that. Okay? But if we allow one of the police officers to mow, to help out, then we go by their weekly time. Instead of a hundred and seventy-one hours, it goes in a seven-day period. Starts with Sunday, goes through Saturday. If they work their regular job in that seven-day period, and if those hours are over forty hours, we have to pay them overtime.
And Scott, what what schedule are you guys working now? Is it three on, three off, or?
We're back to twelves.
Twelves?
We work Monday, Tuesday, half Wednesday, Thursday, work Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then it just flips the next week. So thirty-six hours a week, forty-eight hours the next week. If everybody shows up and they mow overtime in twenty-eight days, it's a hundred and sixty-eight hours.
But vacation time's coming up, correct?
I'm sorry?
Vacation is coming up for your employees.
Correct.
I really wanna try to hire the part-time officers as much as we possibly can.
He's he's working tomorrow and Thursday for traps being done. But Alexis is wanting to have to cover the night shifts because I can't get anybody to work overnight. None of the part-time guys wanna work overnights.
Well, we we have had a share with him in Philly quite a bit. We're in the shop, it's absent. It seems like he's still gonna.
Mike, Mike applied right when I was holding off. And Mike's really good about working. First one we've had that has been really consistent.
I I think we're looking better now at overtime on the police department than we have since I've been at the city.
Since I had.
I've always been four days in.
Since we came back, since I came back, the last Monday, we haven't had any.
Patty, how long before we have March's overtime sheet?
You should have already had it, but I I've been too busy to get it together, so. But by the next meeting, I'll have it.
When it's done, would you let me know so I can see it? I'll be able to talk to you two tomorrow and pull me up on the, on the hour.
Good thing, if we can keep everybody employed, if we don't lose any employees, then we don't want to deal with that.
Did that gentleman have anything he wanted to bring up before he left?
He just visited.
Okay. I didn't get a chance to get around to opening it up to anybody.
Mr. That's my son. He just got in tonight, so.
Okay.
He was in the car with.
So we expect to have the auditor here in Mayor June timeframe to discuss this, but that gives you plenty of time to look through those numbers and and see where our plans were last year and that we wanna repeat this year. And again, there were no violations, thanks to Tommy and Amy and whoever else worked on that. And our major concern with that.
I'm just gonna hit you, must be after lawn mowers.
Excuse me?
One more question about the lawn mowers. If we use our own lawn mowers, you're saying you're just gonna leave the city city mowers set? You're not gonna use them?
We we have a.
We have a higher demand.
They're probably going to be in use as well.
They'll be in use as well, he said.
Well, I mean, they haven't been. You know, I mowed my yard three times before we ever went down to the park to mow it once.
Well, Phil, we've been down to three public works people, and now we're down to two. So basically, by the time they went on mowing, it sounds like trash. You know, Wednesday, pick up dumpsters, I believe. There's no nobody to do anything, so that's why we're very, very happy that you guys stepped up and and did what you did. I know Ernie does mowing on his several properties for free. Chuck has been involved. Justin, I know he does some some work out there, too, so. And Bill, Bill does a lot of mowing that he doesn't have to do, and weedy, thanks to Roger Hennessy. I just can't, I can't allow anybody to come up here and grab you. These things are thirteen thousand, well, you know, they're expensive. I just can't do, I can't do that.
When does the lawn man start? Do you know that?
I don't know exactly. He came in, does paperwork. He said he touched base with Miles and get the keys, so he could get started shortly.
They worked for us last year.
Didn't start till the middle of May last year.
Does it have something to do, matter with the school, his schedule there? Linda, would you like to touch base with him? Okay, thank you. We'll we'll try to speed this. I think the problem is the properties that we've mowed, if you see me on, I'll get that. I'm gonna have to break that mic back up more.
What are happening with her and?
We're gonna, we're gonna get into that in exactly. I got some info to pass to everyone, we'll make some decisions, but.
Okay.
Are we ready to go?
We are.
Okay. Business occupation tax. Is Mr. Workerson here?
Crystal has put this in her pocket two weeks ago, less maybe.
Has everybody read this record? About occupational tax times about five years back? I don't know, is that something we should discuss?
I mean, it's in the ordinance that there's supposed to be that yearly. Would you like me to resend the letter certified and say from the government body?
You've got no response?
No, great.
This is an ordinance. Scott, can we talk maybe code enforcement on this, too?
I have to find out what it was.
Would you pass?
I have a copy.
Okay, I'll see if it. I would go certify, too, Scott doesn't wanna visit in the center. Okay, I'm gonna move on. We have a. Okay, we need counsel approval for BG Consultants. Billing number thirty-two, amount of forty-six thousand eighty-one dollars and twenty cents. Got a motion by Linda, a second by Justin, all those in favor of paying invoice of forty-six eighty-one point two zero. All opposed? Passes.
That's just the additional monitoring that we knew. It was gonna have to happen by the archaeologists when they got in a certain spot while doing the sewer project. So that's what that invoice is. I will ask for reimbursement from the Kansas Water Office. I just, I can have approval obtained.
You have any intel whether they're gonna prove it or not? They will?
Mm-hmm.
This is KB Archaeological Consulting for six thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars. This has to do with eight eight days of monitoring. If you recall, the Osage Nation made us hire archaeologists to come in and do shovel tests before we started the sewer project. And they lived in a tent out here for a week during this test, if you didn't know that. Anyway, they're monitoring the contractors as they they dig up whatever they gotta dig up for artifacts and and maybe remains. To my knowledge, they haven't found anything, so. But we're still paying. So I need a motion for six thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars.
Make that motion.
Got a motion by Ernie.
Second.
Second by Chuck, all in favor?
We get that money back, right?
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next, there is no documentation in the ordinance about how to handle employee meal allowances when they're on train runs. And that's a, that's an interesting thought. There should be, I would think there would be some kind of federal guidance on on that. Scott, do you have any input on how you handle that in your end?
Well, we never had one, so when they were going to train, he asked, they asked, and I said, well, I will. It's not gonna have an ordinance. So I looked up the, we follow the IRS for mileage. I looked up the IRS rate on reimbursements, and they had broken down, it's a hundred and seventy-eight dollars a day, a hundred and ten for room and board, and sixty-eight for meals and incidents per employee. So that's the IRS rate.
Does that sound fair, counsel? Sixty-eight dollars for three meals, right, three meals a day?
Yeah.
So they always did that, didn't they, any business like that, for employees?
We have for being in the military, too.
That's what the real is. I just figured we follow the IRS for the mileage.
That's a government entity. I'm sure they're getting their guidance from some federal.
Fifty, seventy thousand dollar.
So we need a motion from the council, I guess, to to go ahead and set set a dollar for for being.
Make that motion.
Did you say a hundred and seventeen a day?
A hundred and seventy-eight total. They had it broken down, a hundred and ten for room and board, and then that's per person, so. Like when they went out there, they're sharing a room, so. And then, uh, sixty-eight for meals and incidents.
So is that what we wanna do, sixty-eight per day per employee?
Because usually, we we make the reservations well in advance of whatever, whoever's going to train.
Yeah, I think I'll leave right now.
No.
A decent, you deserve a decent dinner, actually. So who's making the motion? Chuck? Chuck makes a motion for sixty-eight dollars a day. Justin, second. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes. We'll be able to put that in the ordinance somewhere. We can add that ourselves, yeah, right?
We'll have to do an ordinance, but I'll get it done before I leave.
Okay, thank you.
Are we gonna have the ordinance just to follow the guideline of them? Or are we gonna have, if for this settlement, because as things change? This will be, yeah. We may have to adjac, adjust the numbers if we don't follow, just follow the.
See, that's the great thing about having a digital ordinance is, we can measure changes. I'm not gonna have to go through all the paperwork.
I didn't know we wanted to have ordinance that we match. Yeah, the IRS website, yeah.
I don't think we should put it out, and that they send it along every year, but we could follow.
Just follow, yeah. Match. Like you do the markets, and then we don't have to adjust the the ordinance to the home run.
That's not the motion you put on the floor and passed.
Yeah, pull back that.
Do you wanna amend the budget? Can you amend the motion?
amend a motion to follow IRS directive on on, that's what.
Chuck, is that what you wanna amend it to? And Justin, do you want to second that?
Yes.
Yeah. Motion passes as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we've got a billing.
How it's a lot. They're billing.
No, go ahead, you hear it?
I- I would talk to the three twenty-two Mulberry, talk about that middle story building behind their house. Uh, twelve by twenty-four, uh, they followed in all our guidelines on the county card. It's hard to find anything, I see obstructing, kind of lines or anything like that, I- I have a problem.
Is it a name? Is it a name, Bill?
It is a repossessed one, actually, but it is a still building.
Twelve by twenty-four, bring-in building?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm scared. I have no problem, I would accept the building, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna pass that, all right? Three twenty-two Mulberry, bring in a twelve by twenty-four shed. While you're doing that, I'll also, I think I had one more picture, Crystal. Uh, Josh Flair down at the, uh, car wash, we had approved him to bring in a tough shed for a doggy wash, and I took a picture of what he brought in, and it's sitting outside now, if you haven't noticed.
No.
I don't know that it's operational, but the building is there.
I'll just change USB drive. I'll keep bringing that up on the motions though.
Got a motion by Brenda to approve the building permit. Second by Mayor, all those in favor? All those opposed? Justin abstains. Oh, there it is, there it is, it's sitting up to the north side of the car, beautiful building. Uh, I just hope it, it doesn't get vandalized. I understand that's the doggy wash.
I think they're doing that every day, so they do that every summer.
Well... Okay, next on the list, we have a public works resignation, which is what took us from three to two people. I believe today was his last day, John George resignation letter. Need a motion to accept the resignation?
Make that motion.
Motion by Ernie.
Second.
Second by Justin, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now it's time to recess into executive sessions times three.
Make a motion to close, uh, city meeting, going to executive session.
He had one, he had...
Well, we'll do the other two, because he may not be in, in all of, and I'll be mine first, I suppose.
I forgot to say what time he's, how long the time is.
Let's go.
Jan?
Are we gonna do three separates or all three together?
How do you wanna do that?
Are they all for the same?
It's all non-elected.
I mean, you can, however long you think it's, you know, what's gonna take, you can do it in one, since it's all the same call.
Well, not all the same people are gonna...
But, oh, you- you're wanting different people in there?
Yeah.
Then it's probably better for you to go ahead and do it separately.
Okay, let's go ahead and recess into the executive line for a motion for ten minutes for just the council. Oh, that handled it, Zim. And the city attorney, and the mayor.
Make that motion.
Motion for mine, second by Mr....